Calling to order the Monday, May 7th, 2012 regular meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell.
Here.
Councilmember Platt Otzen.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
Mayor Protam Turbrack.
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Approved by the Mayor Protam.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kadekell. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing done, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Otzen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we come to the invocation and I see we have Majid Steve Clapper here with us. Would you all please rise?
In the Talmud it says, "You're not required to finish the work, but neither are you free to withdraw from it." Doing the work of this world, fixing what is broken, making complete what is incomplete, is beyond the capabilities of any one man or any one woman. Avino Shabbat Shamayim, Creator in heaven, give us the strength to do the work in this world. Give us the understanding. Let us see, give us eyes that see, a heart that understands, so that we may discern your will, do our part, and do our best to help complete the work, to make this world a holy place, a complete place, to bring shalom to this world. And we say together, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we come to the Citizens' Comments section of tonight's agenda, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on the agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good afternoon, evening. My name is Denise Brainerd and I live in Berkeley. I'm here to talk about some of the final plans for Berkeley Days. As you know, Berkeley Days starts, kicks off this weekend on Saturday, May 12th, with our race. There's the 10K. We've added a 5K and also a one-mile run. That's going to take place at Hurley Field and if you haven't registered in advance, you can register that morning starting at 7:30. The majority of the proceeds this year, the race, is being sponsored by the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. And my understanding from speaking with the organizer of the race, we've gotten more online entries this year than we have in past years. And it's, I'm hoping that it's going to be bigger than it's, than it's been. This is, the Berkeley Days 10K race is the second longest-running 10K in the entire state of Michigan. This year is our 34th annual 10K. They've added the 5K to make it a little easier for some of us who couldn't do 10K, lives depended on it. So even if, you know, you're just starting out, it's, it's a great opportunity just to start out. I think I'm going to try the one mile this year and, and see if I can do it. We'll try the 5K next year. So, but that is this Saturday. Normally it's on Mother's Day. This year we're doing it on Saturday and the response has been fantastic. So that's kind of going to kick off our events for Berkeley Days. We've got, the Miss Berkeley Days pageant is still scheduled for that Tuesday night. We have extended the deadline. We started to get some interest, a lot of interest right after the deadline passed, so we extended it until this Friday, May 11th is this Friday. So the applications are still available at the community center. There are some up here at City Hall that is open to freshman sophomores and juniors and right now it's still scheduled for that time, Tuesday night. And I wanted to remind all of you, city employees, of the softball game on Wednesday night against the Moms Club and the Dad's Club. I went to the Hall and they came up to the Dad's Club like one last year. So this is your opportunity.
It was close though.
It was, it was, it was close. It was real close.
It was close.
So that is going to be Wednesday, May 16th at 7 o'clock on Community Field Number 3. So it's open to all city employees, from the rec, to the police, city council, everyone is welcome to that event. Thursday night is, the midway is going to start and we've also got the Taste of Berkeley that night. And Betty Smith from Berkeley County Committee Assistance is here. She'll be talking to all the ladies and gentlemen. But another event that we've got that is happening that night, this year we've done, we've started a new event really targeting the middle school kids. And we've got a middle schooler who came up with the idea and has been working very hard on this. And she'd like to tell you a little bit about the competition with the middle schoolers.
My name's Samantha. I live in Berkeley. Um, the, it's the questionnaire that, um, is more for the middle schoolers. And it's like, it's for, you can't find the answers on the bowl and it, so you have to go to the historical exam. And I work for the Berkeley Historical Society and the scaring on it. So some of the answers can be found at the historical exam or at City Hall on some pictures and stuff. And if you get them all right, your name gets assigned to a drawing, to one of VIP risk bands for the whole weekend. And you have to get all the answers right to get into the tournament. Okay. One of, one of the questions is, what are the symbols on the Berkeley flag and what do they mean?
So this is new this year with the questionnaire. We've got, the questionnaires are all out and I've given you each a copy of the, of them also. I know that the Berkeley Historical Society and Samantha have worked really hard on coming up with these questions. Again, we wanted to make it a little more challenging. You can see from some of the questions, they are challenging. But it'll get more of the kids involved in, in learning a little bit about the history of Berkeley. And a VIP risk band, that's four days of free rides on the midway. So that in and of itself should be working. The deadline for that, we have to have all of those questionnaires by May 13th and the information is on the questionnaires on how to get those returned. So hopefully the kids will, will go out and get those, get those questionnaires. On Friday, we've got, the craft show's going to start. We're going to have the midway. We're going to have the food booths, the beer tent, and the horseshoe tournament. The horseshoe tournament's going to be that Friday night. And, you know, I, if, and that'll be at 7 o'clock on Horseshoe. The BFW is going to be doing their picnic breakfast again both Saturday and Sunday mornings. And the library will be in there with the used book sale. The Berkeley Junior Women's Club is doing their bootch pageant again on Saturday morning. And that's always a lot of fun, just to come by and watch. There is no cost for admission to the events other than the Taste of Berkeley. And then obviously the cost of the risk band. But the craft show admission is free. The bootch pageant admission is free. The one thing that you ask as far as the bootch pageant is we only have human spectators come watch. Sometimes people like to bring their dogs to come watch the bootch pageant. And that can cause some difficulties, just logistics. So we've also got Last Day Dog Rescue that's going to be at Berkeley Days this year. And they're going to have information on their organization. They actually go in and rescue dogs and put them into foster families and, until they can find their forever homes. So they're going to be available. They're always looking for foster families and looking for people to adopt some of their dogs. We've also got on Saturday afternoon, we're going to have some search and rescue dogs. They're going to be there and show how they can find children or people that get lost. We'll be doing some demonstrations with that as well. We've got the food booths. We've got the midway. We've got the beer tent is going to be on small ice again this year, on Friday and on Saturday. And the petting zoo is going to be there on Sunday. Another new event that we've added this year is with the Berkeley Steelers. And they are going to be doing a punt passing kick competition on Sunday from noon until 2:00 at Hurley Field. So that's another, Steelers are such a huge part of the community, of the community in particular, that we wanted to be able to let them showcase some of their talents and some of the talents of their kids as the punt passing kick. That is another event that is free, but it does require pre-registration because their disforms and appearance happen Sunday as far as that goes. And the registration forms are available at the community center for that as well. So the raffle drive will be Sunday at 4:30. First prize is $600. Then we have 500, 400, 300, 200, 100. So there are more chances to win this year. And pretty much all of the community service groups in the city are going to have their, have raffle tickets for sale. So please, please, please buy raffle tickets and hope to see everybody up there. We're starting getting really excited about this. It's going to be a lot of fun, especially with the new events that we've got. So we'll kick it all off on Saturday with the race and hope to see everybody there. So thank you very much.
Thank you Denise. And thank you to all of your committee for the work you're doing to having this a wonderful event. All of my colleagues join me in expressing that gratitude, but you won't notice that at the baseball game. All of the horseshoes. We're coming to win. And thank you Samantha for being here also.
Betty Smith, Berkeley. I'm going to just cover a couple little things from Berkeley Days. First one is the Taste of Berkeley, which is going to open Berkeley Days on Thursday evening. We have 11 of our finest restaurants that are going to be showcasing all their specialties at this event. I do have tickets available. We do have tickets available. They're $25 and it's going to be from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the community center. Of course, we'd love to have you all come. Secondly, bike safety poster contest, which we've had for many, many years. And it's going to be held this year Friday night to turn in your posters at the, actually at Ice Arena. And that's between 5:00 and 9:00 PM. We will judge them somewhere around 10:00. The ribbons will be hung. And then on Sunday, I will take them down and then we give the prizes to the first three winners in all of the grades from 3K through 5th grade. And then we take them to school and let the schools present them to the kids and give them their prizes. That way we don't have the people taking them down and they're there for the whole, whole of Berkeley Days. No, I have a flyer for each one of you. And if you've got somebody that you know would like to enter into the poster contest, you have to be younger, 5th grade or younger. We want you all to come. I think the taste is going to be really good this year. We've got a lot of publicity on it and a lot of people are talking about it. So come and enjoy a great evening. I'm going to pass these on.
Thank you. Thank you Betty. Anybody else for public comments?
Denise Brainerd, I just wanted to point out the restaurants that are going to be at the table there. And the restaurants that are going to be there this year are dispelling. We have Hoggers, Butterfly Bake Shop, Almara's, Coffee Beanery, Lardy Stone, Mr. Kabab, Ellen Stone's, Green is Egg, the Center. The lunch cafe, Amici's. And the, I know the, all of those businesses do have the flyers up. It does, they, they give contact information on there if you're interested in purchasing tickets. I have them as well. But you could also call Allen at 248-408-1793 or email L. Wills@berklyschool.com for information. And the proceeds do benefit Berkeley County Goods Youth Assistance through the summer camp program.
Very good. Thank you. We have this three former members of this council in the audience. I'd like to recognize them. Councilmember Mayor Corrige, Mayor Stephan, and Mayor Fraser. It's great to see all three of you. Anybody else would like to come to the microphone?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. You can see the flowers I brought. This is that time of the year, poppy time. And we want to be sure that everyone always remembers our veterans, living or dead. Usually, we'd mail them these to you. I think you might have received them. And this year, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear my name. Excuse me. Abel Fraser, Berkeley. But I'm here representing the Berkeley American Legion, Lady Sutcliffe, Human 374. Okay. And so as poppy chairman, I have been asked to come here. And you, the poppy, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
A small poster. If we could hang that on the bulletin board, I would leave that with you. So thank you very much. Again, thanks for speaking with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're seeing none. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number, item number one, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the 34th City Council on Monday, April 16th, 2012. Item number two, proclamation number P. 1-12, matter of approving a proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming May 2012 as Berkeley History Month and celebrating the 80th anniversary of Berkeley's designation as a city. Item number three, proclamation number P. 2-12, matter of approving a proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, celebrating the 140th anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, May 13 through Saturday, May 19, 2012, as Arbor Week. Item number four, resolution number R. 19-12, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Telcom Credit Union. Item number five, ordinance number O. 3-12, matter of adopting an amendment to the Berkeley City Code, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1 through 7(c), Chapter 122, Traffic in Vehicles, Section 122 through 61, through 122 through 63.5, to adopt MCL 257.6251(c) by specific reference and to readapt the Michigan Vehicle Codes by reference, second reading.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support. Support from Mayor, if there are any corrections. And second and so, if Ms. Prince would please call the roll.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Otzen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now we move to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one of tonight's agenda?
Recognizations and presentations, matter of any recognition or presentations from the consent agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Baker to read proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's indeed an honor to read this proclamation this evening. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of, uh, City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming May 2012 as Berkeley History Month and celebrating the 80th anniversary of Berkeley's designation. Whereas, in 1819, first settlers arrived in what is now Oklahoma. And in 1825-
A four-day steamboat service between Detroit and Buffalo enabled many settlers to shorten their journey west as they made their way from, uh, from New York and New Jersey. Travelers were greeted at Red Tavern, which was owned by Mother Handsome, at Woodward and Franklin Road. John Benjamin made his journey from New York and purchased 80 acres of land and built a barn on the site where Roseland Cemetery now sits. And whereas, the settlers continued arriving, building their farms and raising their families. The first school was built in what is now Berkeley in the late 1830s. The first foam line was strung for 10 homes along 11 Mile between Berkeley and Royal Oak. In 1919, a town pump was built and electric lighting arrived. In 1923, Berkeley became a village. And in 1926, the first Berkeley Days was held. And whereas, on May 23rd, 1932, during the Great Depression and with just under 6,000 residents, the village of Berkeley became a city with a mayor, six commissioners, a city clerk, treasurer, assessor, judge, and constable. And whereas, since its early days, Berkeley has flourished into a city of nearly 15,000 residents boasting eight schools, nine parks, a state-of-the-art library, over 6,000 homes, a unique downtown, and the title "best affordable suburb in the United States" for 2010. And whereas, history is made every second, every minute, and every hour. And with the dedication of a small group of volunteers, volunteer members of the Berkeley Historical Committee, its membership gathers information and assembles that information into a format available for us to treasure for years to come. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims, Section 1, that the month of May 2012 is hereby proclaimed as Berkeley History Month. And City Council invites every citizen to become acquainted with those who settled here, raised their families, and started their businesses here by visiting the Berkeley Historical Museum. And, Section 2, the City Council urges those familiar with stories and legends of the early days in Berkeley to share their accounts and their photos with the members of, of the Historical Committee so that they may be retained for the pleasure of others. Proclaim the 7th day of May 2012 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, I have asked Councilmember Platt Otzen to read proclamation 212.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, celebrating the 140th anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, May 13 through Saturday, May 19, 2012, as Arbor Week. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and stated, "Other holidays repose upon the past. Arbor Day proposes for the future." And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, the City of Berkeley is proud to be a recipient of the Tree City USA Award for the 22nd consecutive year, the Tree City Growth Award for the 17th consecutive year, and in 2004, we became the first community in the state of Michigan to receive the Sterling Award. And whereas, it is the intent of the City Council to pledge its commitment to the understanding, education, and support of the global environmental challenge and therefore to spotlight for our community some of the best things this city can affirm. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims, Section 1, that the week of Sunday, May 13 through Saturday, May 19, 2012, be hereby and is, be hereby designated as Arbor Week in the City of Berkeley. And the City Council urges all residents to nurture and care for existing trees as well as plant new ones and to become aware of how beneficial trees are to the earth's beauty and environment. And Section 2, that Wednesday, May 16, 2012, is hereby proclaimed as Arbor Day in the City of Berkeley. And all residents are urged to support efforts to care for our trees and to support the Berkeley Tree Board, celebrating their 22nd anniversary, pursuing various programs making the community aware of the importance of trees, bushes, and shrubs. And Section 3, as part of the Arbor Week and Arbor Day celebration for 2012, the City of Berkeley will be planting over 80 trees with the Spring Tree Planting Program. Proclaimed the 7th day of May 2012 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. I've asked Councilmember Blanchard to read Resolution 1912.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Telcom Credit Union. Whereas, in 2008, the Berkeley Public Library celebrated its 80th anniversary of its humble beginning in the corner of the Old Sea Hall, with a total of 500 books available for the citizens of Berkeley. And whereas, since that time, the library has obtained over 80,000 books, thousands of DVDs, books on CD, and music CDs, as well as the addition of many programs, including those for toddlers, preschool, and school-aged children, investing in our city's greatest, greatest assets, our children. And whereas, in 2011, our library provided numerous summer reading programs, which attracted over 320 young people to the special events, which were only possible because of the donation of many local businesses. And whereas, in the spirit of supporting their community, Telcom Credit Union has generously lent their support of the summer 2012 reading program for the children of Berkeley with their commitment of a $1,000 donation. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby recognizes Telcom Credit Union for its generosity and recognition of the importance of our Berkeley library. And the City Council, on behalf of all residents, expresses its sincere thanks and appreciation to Telcom Credit Union for their dedication to the service of the City of Berkeley. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, May 7, 2012, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. I see we have the Director of the Library here and a representative, I think, from Telcom. Perhaps you'd like to come to the microphone?
It's my pleasure to introduce to you Tamara Powell, who is the Branch Manager at the Berkeley Branch of Telcom Credit Union. And also my pleasure to give thanks to Telcom for, I've lost track. It's, I think, at least five years of support for the library and the library's summer programs. You will be discussing the budget and the financial challenges the city faces later on. And if it weren't for community partners like Telcom, we would not be able to offer the programs that we can offer. We are very grateful to them for their support and it is a pleasure to be here tonight.
Thank you. Again, my name is Tamara Powell. I am the Branch Manager of Telcom Credit Union here in the community. I just want to, again, thank the City of Berkeley for continuing to be so grateful for giving us different opportunities, whether we're giving a donation to the library or volunteering with the Parks Department. Just give us any opportunity that we can help in the community. Just give us, uh, any opportunity that we can help in the community. Most of our members are, uh, actual residents in the community, and we're just very grateful that we can help out wherever we can.
Well, we're, we're very thankful.
Thank you.
And if you come forward, uh, Councilmember Blanchard, we'll give you the resolution.
Here's a copy of the resolution. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you read item number two on tonight's agenda, please?
Motion number M twenty-five dash twelve, in matter of approving Commercial Climate Controls Corp. to complete HVAC work at the community center in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
Is there a motion to approve M twenty-six twelve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrack with support by Councilmember, uh, Platt Onson. Mr. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I will also concur with the recommendation that's before you to recommend to the City Council, uh, the proposed contract, uh, for commercial climate controls, uh, to do the HVAC work at the community center. But with us this evening is our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Tom Caldwell. I'd like for him to please join us, and for the public, tell us a little bit about what, uh, the purpose of these, uh, AC units and how, how they will be, uh, placed at the, uh, at the community center. Mr. Caldwell? Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, the HVAC unit in question is the largest rooftop unit that we have. It controls the, uh, the multipurpose room, basically, um, and when necessary, uh, this is a unit that is large enough that it can handle some of the auxiliary rooms around the unit. Uh, it's about thirteen years old. Um, we're starting to see some issues, um, with it, and it is time to replace it, um, as it's the, the most important unit that we have at the community center.
Are there any questions, uh, for Mr. Caldwell? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Tom, thank you for, for this and for bringing this to our attention and helping us, uh, understand the importance of, of upgrades such as this. My question's largely with, uh, timing. Uh, if we were to proceed with this, um, when might you imagine it starting and finishing, uh, for instance?
Um, it, it is a, a fiscal year eleven-twelve line item. Uh, we've talked with Commercial Climate Controls that they can get going on it as soon as we get things approved, uh, so it is our plan to have the work completed before June thirty.
Okay, thank you. And would, um, the residents or the existing programs that are scheduled to be impacted by this work, or would this be scheduled, uh, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it, it is a big unit. I mean, we will need a crane to come in and take the old unit out and, um, get the new unit in, and so, you know, certainly we'll take a look at our scheduling to try and, you know, avoid that as much as possible. I mean, it will be work that, you know, will be done during the day, um, but I have talked to them about, you know, how we position, you know, some of the heavy machinery and, you know, that'll be put in a place where, um, the front entryway, you know, is still going to be open, the entry into the, the senior annex off of the, uh, Sunny Knoll Circle, that will be open as well, so, um, you know, safety first. We'll still want to make sure the residents can use the community center while we get the work done at the same time.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Caldwell, you mentioned that this was a eleven-twelve line item. Um, it's in the budget. Do we come in under budget with this proposal?
Uh, we did come in under budget, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? Mr. Sessa.
Just to comment, uh, City Council, please know that we did work very closely with our engineers to make sure that we, you know, selected the, uh, the proper unit, and, uh, I know that Mr. Caldwell also worked very hard to make sure that this is something that would be satisfactory. So I do appreciate all the work that he's done on this. Just wanted to let you know that we do have the, uh, or this item was reviewed by our city engineer as well.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M twenty-five?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Next item on tonight's agenda is work session. Uh, Ms. Prince, would you please read item A on tonight's work session?
Receive final report and recommendations from the two thousand twelve Berkeley Citizens Committee.
Mr. Sessa.
You know, Council, I know that, uh, whenever anyone hears, you know, headly override, it's always a scary topic for some folks. Oh, it is, I guess, for everybody here, and we're dealing with, uh, important, uh, finances. We're dealing with the tax pay, taxes that are, that we receive from our residents. It is a very, very important topic. I know that, uh, that a headly override is something that we have discussed many times. Uh, just to give you a, a quick background, uh, when I first started, uh, as the city manager for the city of Berkeley, uh, over ten years ago, uh, we did approach the residents of the city of Berkeley for a headly override. Unfortunately, we were not successful. Uh, since that time, and together with the City Council, we've, we've, I think we've done a good job in order to be able to provide the services. There's some things that have occurred, uh, that have gone beyond our control with regards to our economy and things of that nature, that I think, uh, Councilman, uh, Baker has said it best, in that we're not going to cut our way out of, uh, out of, uh, out of this this time, although we have done everything in our, uh, within our ability to make sure that we've looked at, uh, at all areas, and we continue to look at all areas to make sure that we're providing services, uh, at a, not only, uh, efficiently, but at a, at a cost-effective price as well. So that's something that we, as administrators, and always look at. So, for the past few years, as I've said, we have been looking at this issue, and I've been presenting this to the City Council. I know we've had numerous work sessions in past years where I have discussed this issue with the City Council. Uh, finally, this year, as I said, we are, we're just not going to cut our way out of, out of it this time. Uh, we did go before the City Council again in March this year, and we asked them to, uh, to again consider, uh, a headly override. But the council took one, one extra step this time, and what they decided to do was to select a, uh, I call it a, a blue-ribbon group of individuals to come together and, and do what, uh, what they've had, uh, I, I should say, I've, they've studied for, for many years, uh, take a look at the numbers that we've been giving to the City Council, take a look at the information that we've given as well to the council prepared, to see if indeed, uh, they were looking, uh, or they were reading, uh, this information in, in the same manner that the City Council was, was looking at, or to see perhaps if there was another way, or if, if, uh, perhaps we were missing something. I know that staff and I, uh, spent numerous hours in providing the information to, to the, uh, to the committee, and, uh, and I want to thank each and every single one of them, some of them, uh, which are here with us this evening, and perhaps may assist, uh, me in answering any questions that the City Council may have. We've broken this work session into three, three parts, basically. Uh, the first, you will hear, uh, the presentation, uh, from the Citizens Advisory Committee. They themselves will come up to the City Council, um, read the report that was, uh, put together by the committee, and believe me, when you're online and, uh, putting something together, uh, that fifteen people can agree to is, is quite a task, uh, but we were able to do that. So they will come, uh, and, uh, and read to the City Council their findings and their recommendation. And just, uh, very quickly, Your Honor, I, I would like to name, uh, the individuals that participated in this committee. I think that's, I think that's very, very important. Mark Herron was the chair, uh, Nicole M. Smithson was the vice chair, Josephine Brewer, John DeLonge, Dale Goodcourage, Paul Hunkala, Drew Pennington, Marilyn Stephan, Scott, here's a tough one for me, Zulinski, Tim Canty, Tim Goday, Colleen Grave Line, Jennifer McCulsky, Brian Prentice, and Stacy Stevens. These were individuals, uh, spent, uh, several hours, uh, and several days in, in studying the information that we had given to the City Council, and, uh, and they labored long and hard with staff in asking us questions, uh, and things of that nature, in order for them to come up, uh, with a recommendation and the report to the City Council. The third, uh, portion of this report, uh, or the second portion, I'd, I'd like to ask our finance director, he will give us a brief summary overview as to, again, what the committee saw, and give us an update in terms of where we are, uh, with regards to the city's, uh, financial, uh, position. And then after all is said and done, we, I've also, uh, we're also working with, uh, Miller Canfield. They have been our bond counsel in past years, and we have Mr. Patrick McGow, and he will, uh, discuss and answer any questions that the City Council may have, if indeed the City Council wishes to consider a headly override. Again, we've taken the recommendation that was put together by the, uh, by the advisory committee, and we've asked, uh, Mr. McGow to put that into, in terms of, uh, uh, legal, uh, requirements, legal jargon as they say, but the legal language, and, uh, and that it's clear, and that it's, uh, it's specific, and that, uh, it addresses the, uh, the recommendation. I'd like to make something else really, really clear, though. Again, this is just a recommendation, and this is just a work session. The City Council will have the final say as to, uh, exactly what some of the specifications will be. Uh, when we put this together, uh, again, uh, we assumed, or we made some assumptions that the council would approve, uh, the recommendation. But again, please understand, the council still has to, uh, take a look at this, uh, they will review it, and then, uh, and then hopefully make a, make a decision, uh, with regards to, uh, to this item. So with that, uh, let us begin this work session, and I will ask, uh, Mr. Mark Herron, the chair, to begin. Thank you, Mr. Herron, and he will, uh, he will read the recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor O'Dwyer, members of the council. As Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, tasked with considering a headly override, I'm here this evening to present our final report. As Ms. DeSessa has already recognized the members of the committee, uh, we'll skip that part. Several weeks ago, the Berkeley City Council appointed fifteen Berkeley residents to the Citizens Advisory Committee to explore whether the council should propose a millage increase to the Berkeley electorate. According to its mission, the committee was developed, to develop a mission, a vision for Berkeley given today's fiscal challenges. Put another way, the committee's mission was to assess whether a millage increase was warranted, or, if not, suggest areas or services that the council should focus on if it needed to reduce the city budget. In order to fulfill this mission, the committee met on April ninth and April seventeenth. At the April ninth meeting, the committee received information on how property taxes are calculated, the impact of Proposal A and Headley, and the city's past, present, and projected financial outlook, from City Finance Director David Sumuda. City Manager DeSessa and the heads of s- the seven city departments briefed the committee on the city's efforts to reduce costs in the past and the potential impact that a failure to increase operating revenue could have on city services. Lastly, each member of the committee received a resource notebook to review before the next meeting. The materials in the notebook included, among other things, information on Proposal A and Headley, financial data about Berkeley, specific information about each city department, and demographic and economic projections for Berkeley and the surrounding communities, prepared by the Southeast Michigan Council of Government. At the April seventeenth meeting, the committee heard additional information from Mr. Sumuda concerning the accuracy of past city efforts to forecast economic trends. Additionally, the committee learned about other millage increases recently enacted by neighboring communities. The committee also discussed the information that was presented at the prior meeting and contained in the resource notebook. Following discussion, the committee voted on its recommendations for the council. By way of discussion, in this, in two thousand six, two thousand seven, the taxable value in Berkeley was approximately five hundred and six million dollars. This taxable value generated four point two million dollars in operating revenue for Berkeley's general fund. For the upcoming operating year of two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, the taxable value in Berkeley will be approximately four hundred and forty-five million dollars. This taxable value will generate three point six million dollars in operating revenue for Berkeley's general fund. The decrease in Berkeley property values means that the tax value available for operating, that is, general fund and public safety, in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen will be, or I should say, two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, will be six, sixty-one million dollars less than the tax value available in the two thousand six, two thousand seven period. In other words, while prices have increased over this specified six-year period, Berkeley has approximately six hundred thousand dollars less in revenue than it did in two thousand six, two thousand seven, the median expenses for government. It should also be noted that the city has also lost significant shared revenue from the state in recent years. And if the current bill in the legislature to eliminate the personal property tax charged to businesses passes, Berkeley will also lose an estimated two hundred and five thousand dollars in tax revenue each year. The loss... Oh, I'm sorry, it should also, or, I'm sorry, the loss of tax revenue has led to significant decreases in the services that the city has been able to provide. These decreases include three fewer public safety officers than the city had in two thousand two, less code enforcement, hour cuts at City Hall and the library, reduced programming and support for children's community athletic programs, and reduced inspections and trash collections at city parks. A continued decline in operating revenue threatens Berkeley's double-A bond rating, Berkeley's capacity for complying with the state's financial requirements for municipalities, and Berkeley's ability to meet its legacy and employment, uh, employment obligations. Failure to increase the city's operating revenue could potentially lead to more cuts in public safety, library hours and programming, minor street repair, code enforcement, curbside leaf pickup, and parks and recreation programs. The committee's general consensus was, was that it is critical that more tax revenue be available for the city. Several members of the committee suggested in discussion that the committee recommend that the City Council propose to the electorate a millage increase of four mills or more. However, a formal proposal was not made per this discussion. Another committee member suggested recommending a millage increase of two mills, which lacked community, committee support. After balancing the financial needs of the city with the financial needs of individual homeowners, the majority of the committee concluded that it did not appear that going beyond three mills was the best course of action at this time. It appears that the proposed three-mill tax increase will cost the average Berkeley homeowner a hundred and seventy-five dollars per year. The committee also considered whether a sunset provision to the millage would be appropriate. After much discussion, the majority of the committee rejected imposing a time limitation. The majority reasoned that although the ec- economic climate will hopefully improve, and eventually the city may not need to levy taxes at the proposed rate, it is critical to ensure that the necessary funds be available for the city to meet its expenses and prepare for the future. Assuming that it is legally permissible, the committee recommends the city collect the increased tax in December. Because the December tax bill tends to be smaller, a December collection will hopefully be... minimize the impact on the taxpayers. In conclusion, the members of the committee want to maintain a safe community and the high quality of life that all Berkeley residents enjoy. In addition, the committee values the services of the city provides and deeply appreciates the efforts and sacrifices our current and retired employees have made. After careful deliberation, the committee recommends that the city council propose a millage increase to the Berkeley electorate of three mills. The committee believes that this increase is warranted in order to maintain our current services and provide for Berkeley's long-term financial stability. Although some communities that have passed millage increases have included a sunset provision, the committee does not believe that the city council should include a sunset provision in the Berkeley ballot initiative. And with that, I conclude the committee's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, this is a comprehensive and thorough and well-written report. It, I attended the meetings of this committee, and they spend many hours in session in discussion. But beyond that, the documentation that they were given required them to do hours of personal study of the finances. So the residents of the city and the members of this council are indebted to this committee for your dedication and your diligence, and for your final decision. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, I'd also like the public to know that if they wish to review much of the documents, or all of the documents, I should say, that we gave to the committee and to the city council, you can find them on our website. And our website address is www.berkleymish.org. You can see exactly every single item that this committee studied and reviewed. And I want to thank them as well, again, for all their hard work.
Will it also include this report?
Yes, Your Honor. We will make sure that after this date, we will put that on there as well.
Very good.
Thank you. Before we start and turn it over to our Finance Director, just for information to our public, you know, when I talked about this issue, I'd like our residents to also know that, to the best of my knowledge, that I've been able to find, it has been over 53 years since the citizens of Berkeley have approved an operating millage for the city of Berkeley. It has been a long time. You have approved, thank you very much, as they say, other types of overrides, but they pertain to road improvements. And I believe when we did the library, the construction of the library, and the public safety building as well. So right now, the only thing we have outstanding are the road bonds. And we're pretty close to completing those as well. Just thought people should know, Your Honor. Now with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Finance, and he's also our Treasurer, Mr. David Sabuda, to just briefly, again, give the city council and the public out there an update on the city's financial standing. Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Mrs. DeSessa. Appreciate it greatly. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've gone over the material countless times with the committee and with the council. Excuse me. In our five major funds, the general fund, the major street fund, the local street fund, the sanitation fund, and the Downtown Development Authority Capture Fund. Out of those five major funds, we are looking to lose over $4 million in fund balance over the next four years. And that's just paying to maintain current city services. The reason for this is that revenues are dropping faster and faster due to the declining property values in the municipality. SCV, on a case-by-case basis now, is at or dropping faster than the taxable value, thus driving down revenue. We are not seeing any CPI increase in tax revenue because SCV is dropping so fast. Out of the $4 million in lost fund balance or rainy day fund, $2 million of that belongs to the general fund. Over the last three years, including this upcoming, over the last two years and including the upcoming fiscal year, we've lost over $1.3 million in revenues to the general fund. That's a 13% reduction in revenue. These are the funds that maintain current city service. These are the funds that help operate on a day-to-day basis, all the departments within the city. So with that, I can't stress enough the hard work that the committee put in, that council has put in, and that we have a tough role ahead of us. And these funds are crucial to maintaining current city service. And with that, I can then step into, if you wish, Mr. Mayor and...
Before you do that, there might be a question or two from someone on the council.
Oh, good point.
Any members of the council have a question or two? Yeah, for Tim Tarbrack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the sake of the residents that weren't on the committee, may not know, Mr. Herron mentioned that it would equate to roughly $175 a year. What would one mill do for the city's budget? You know, we mentioned the numbers and what we're losing. What would it look like?
One mill will bring in gross $154,000. Okay? Approximately. We don't get a full $154,000 because of tax increment financing and personal property tax, and I won't get into that this evening. But at the end of the day, it's about $450,000 comes in. Two mills, $900,000, and then 1.3 to 1.4 million, three mills. So that's what one, two, and three mills would bring in.
Thank you. When you talk about these numbers and the losses over the period, the last three years and beyond, these are not your numbers alone. These are audited numbers. Is that correct?
That's correct. Also, the SCV and the taxable value numbers are courtesy of the Oakland County Equalization Department. We get all those numbers. Those are not my numbers. Those are Mr. Heber, the Oakland County Assessor. He puts the tax value and SCV numbers together based upon sales, and he is the gentleman that comes up with the projections. And he's been very, very, very good. He is projecting in the next two years continued decline, although not as great, but still continued decline in taxable value and SCV here in the city of Berkeley.
How does our audit stack up amongst audits across the state?
We stack up very well. We, like the committee has said, we have a double A bond rating. We have an unqualified clean opinion, meaning that we fairly present our numbers. We generally have a healthy fund balance in order to cover extraordinary events and some capital improvements as the years progress. But we meet the minimum in that area.
Now, am I recalling correctly that last year, our budget audit, our budget process was given a state award?
Oh, yes. We put together, it's been the last four years now, we have received a, the GFOA Outstanding Budget Presentation Award, that goes out to all municipalities across the United States who qualify. We're one in a handful that received the award.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd also, just a quick comment and then a question. Having attended the work sessions as well, I can certainly say that they were lengthy in time and heavy in content, and thoughtful in both the deliberations and the comments from everybody on the committee. And so I'd like to, again, echo the sentiments of gratitude and appreciation for all those involved in participating in the process, for making such a thoughtful and thorough recommendation, and to administration and staff for their work in preparing that material. My question, Mr. Sabuda, is more of an amplification on an item that was touched upon in the recommendation, having to do with one of the revenue sources that's in decline. And that's the state funds. It was touched upon with the state shared revenue and also the personal property tax issues. And could, for us, characterize the nature of those funds, the dollar impact, and then if you could also translate that into mills for us as well, please.
Sure. There are two components. We'll start with state shared revenues first. State shared revenues is composed of two pieces. There is the Constitution piece, which cannot be touched because of the name. It's in the Constitution. But there's also a second piece, which was formerly known as the statutory state shared revenue, which the legislature has changed, the governor and legislature has changed, what they now call it is the Economic Vitality Improvement Program. And how these are funded is through sales tax. Okay? The dollars get thrown into a pool from across the state. Sales taxes added up, and then through formulas are allocated to the municipalities based upon population. And there are certain factors in the formula, and I won't get into that.
Mr. Sabuda, our, the taxable value is calculated based on a sales study, correctly?
What happened?
Like a 30-month sales study? There used to be.
Basically, what happens is this. There's SCV on your property, and there's taxable value on your property. The SCV is determined on a one-year sales study, 12 months now. It used to be 24, now it's 12. Then what happens is the county assessor will compare whatever's lower, the SCV or the taxable value. And then based upon whatever the lower value is, the county assessor picks that up and applies that to your property, and that would be your new tax value.
So that's historical sales. So when things start to come back, we're one year behind, peak starting to come back up again.
No question.
So we're suffering one year longer than the people would think that we are.
That's correct. Basically, what happens is this, is as you recall from Proposal A, we are capped at growth. It's CPI or 5%. Right now, we're not getting any CPI, certainly not getting 5%. So when property values do come back, and we're only going to be capped 5% max. So let's say we do get a growth of 20%. We're not going to see it. We're going to see 5. We get a 2.7% growth. We'll get 2.7 eventually, one day when that comes. But it will take us longer to dig out of the hole because we are capped on growth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Plonson.
Okay. So according to Zillow, which I'm sure is right, the value of our homes have started to go back up. So what's about to happen in the market that makes the predictions seem as if we're still going to have losses?
Well, according, I, with all due respect, Councilman, I disagree on the values going up. The county assessor is telling us that over the next two years, we're going to see declines, another 2%, another 1%. The other issue that's hanging out there is foreclosures. What ended up happening in one year was, what ended up happening one year was, we were anticipating a full foreclosure situation where all the houses came back on the market. That did not happen. What ended up happening was half. If you recall, the legal issues with foreclosures came into play, and foreclosures stopped being turned into, going back onto the market. So we're expecting that to come back. That's the second wave of foreclosures coming on the market. Right now, Berkeley has 1 in 72 homes is in foreclosure. To give you an idea where everybody else sits, Birmingham's 1 in 100, Royal Oak is 1 in 76, Oak Park and Hazel Park are at 1 in 32. So as you look at that in the region here, the next big wave, to answer your question, is the foreclosure, is the second round coming up. The big question is, is how many are in Berkeley?
Very good. Any additional discussion? Very good. Then, Ms. Prince, would you read item number three on the work session?
Band counsel presentation.
Mr. Sessa.
Mr. Sabuda, are you going to give a presentation over there?
If we would. If you want me, do you want to go there?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Before, I know, Your Honor, we just, we moved a little too quickly.
Is that yours?
Yes.
It's fine.
I think this will help also.
What we wanted to do here is so that the residents at home particularly, who haven't had a chance to study these numbers, get a little sense of what we're talking about.
Exactly. Thank you, Your Honor. Can we turn off the lights?
I have to let it warm up.
That's the story of our lives, you know?
Sabuda, make sure, please, so that you get the mic, so that you can be recorded.
Very good. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, very good. All right.
It worked fine a few minutes ago.
I have to do it manually. Hit a button.
Arrows.
Just push the arrow.
Arrow.
There we go. Okay. What this does, that's going to show very well. How is that better?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. All right. What this chart shows is what the average taxpayer paid in property taxes from '06, '07 through what we're estimating for, what's going to happen for '13. The average, let's talk a little bit about the average homeowner in Berkeley. The average homeowner in Berkeley has a home that's valued SCV or worth on the market about $120,000 now. So basically, $60,000 is the taxable value. Right now, precisely $58,001. So as you can see from the chart, '08, '09, the app for all tax payments made by a homeowner, If council elects to levy the extra three mills, well, I should say this, in '12, '13, we're projected to pay $1,099.6. So you can see the drop from the $2,213 down to the $1,996. Now, looking at '12, '13, if three mills were added on, you would be at $2,171.04. So basically, about $42 less than at the peak of your tax bill in '08, '09. Any questions here?
So another way of saying that, then, it seems to me, is if my tax bill was $2,213 in '07, '08, even given this increase of three mills, my tax would today be $2,171.
Correct.
So I would be paying, you're saying, $42 less than I paid in '08, '09.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you look at it this way, I wrote it out, the average taxpayer, $58,000, $59,000 tax value, 175, the three mills would run about $175 per year, as the committee pointed out, $14.58 per month, or 48 cents per day. That's what the three mills would cost the average homeowner. Any questions here? Same chart, just a little bit different.
Mr. Sabuda?
Yes.
I know that we say that the average taxpayer, that this is the amount, 175, but for the public out there, is it possible that some people may pay less, or some people may pay more?
Yes. Some people, certainly, this is, you're the, this is the average. There are people that will pay a lot less, and there'll be some people that will pay more. Absolutely.
Very good. I just want, I don't want people to think that everybody's going to pay 175.
No, 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 no.
It's just the average.
It's based on the value of your home and the tax value on your home.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Good point. Okay. Let's take a look at our neighbor, as we compare to our neighbors. This is the operating tax rates as of '07, '07, '11. So this is last year's tax rates. So if somebody else wants, is going to add on to their tax rates, it's going to obviously make the numbers larger. To the best of my knowledge, none of the revenue rates are falling off for '12. Royal Oak is the lowest tax rate in the area, $11.72. The proposed Berkeley 12 is $14.49. We're the second lowest in the area. Birmingham, third. Now, if you were to put the three mills on, we would switch places with Birmingham. And Birmingham would become two, and Berkeley would become three. Pleasant Ridge would be four, Lathir Village, and Madison Heights, Southfield, and you can read the rest of the chart there. So you can see from this point... So you can see from this point of view, if you were to put the three mills on, we would be, we would still be the third lowest in the region. Which is, uh, which is really good. Really, really good compared to the, uh, the communities down in five. Any questions here? Okay. Can I conclude with the presentation? Thank you. Thank you. Makes it fairly clear that, uh, where we rank as a community, um, relative to our neighbors. Now, we're ready to move on. I'll lift the rank present. If you see any, so then we are ready to move on to the third item here, the bond council presentation. Mr. Sessa.
Thank you, Your Honor. For that, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Patrick McCall to please approach and give a presentation to the city council, and obviously to help me answer any questions of the council we have. You're welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Pat McCall. I'm an attorney at Miller Canfield. I've worked with the city in the past on some of its other financing projects, most recently the bond projects that have been added to the roads. Heard tonight from the headly commission, as well as the city administration, related to their recommendations and proposals related to potential headly override votes. I was asked to prepare the language for the election, both in terms of the ballot questions to be presented to the voters, as well as the resolution that would need to be approved by the city council that was going to be presented to the voters. And I have incorporated the recommendations of the headly committee, as well as the administration, preparing a draft resolution calling a special election for voter purposes.
I believe that's in your packets tonight, and I thought I'd go through that briefly as to what's in there, and then also explain what the different options are. Because as Mrs. De Sessa indicated earlier in the meeting, ultimately, it's up to the city council to decide whether anything is going to be presented to the voters. And the city council is the entity charged with approving the resolution, as well as the ballot language, which would need to be submitted. I will say that when it comes to ballot questions for taxes, there are various state laws that come into play, as well as timing requirements on when you can ask those questions. So this resolution and the language are designed to incorporate what are the legal requirements in order to do so, and I will explain to you as we go through it what the different options are that the council has in terms of those changes. Essentially, what we're looking at and what has been suggested is an increase of three mills to undo the headly override. And just so people understand what that means, because it's been talked a lot, the city charter of the city of Berkeley authorizes a levy of up to 13 mills for municipal purposes, of which three mills shall be devoted exclusively to police and fire. So your taxing power that you have for operating purposes comes from your city charter, which was approved by your voters many decades ago. That says 13 mills, which includes three for police and fire. When the voters of the state of Michigan approved the headly amendment back in 1978, what it did was it set up a process by which the authorized maximum tax rates would be rolled back based upon calculations that are done every year, which was essentially designed to reduce the millage to the extent that the overall growth of the assessed values in the community went up at a rate greater than inflation. And so what you have is these various calculations, the headly rollback fractions, millage reduction fractions, there's a lot of different numbers that come into play each year to determine for all communities that levy taxes, of the amount that it says in our enabling document of 13 mills in your case, how much are we actually legally authorized to levy that year? So what happened was, really, in the 80s and the 90s, as the value of homes increased dramatically, the millage rate was rolled back to reflect that growth. So what you have today is, the city has, of its 13 mills, which your charter says you're allowed to levy, that's been rolled back now to 8.2028 mills. So that's what's been rolled back by operation of the headly amendment. Now, historically, the city here has looked at its millage as 10 mills for operating and three for police, because that's how your charter has, gets to the 13. If you break that down, that's roughly 6.3101 for municipal operating purposes and 1.8927 for police and fire purposes. So that's what the impact of the headly rollback has been upon your community. One of the other taxing, taxes that the city's authorized to levy, which is not in the charter, but it's set forth by a separate statute, is that the city is authorized to levy up to three mills for garbage collection purposes. This was a statute that was enacted back in 1917, and like the city charter, that also is subject to the headly rollback. So over time, that three-mill authorization has been rolled back to 1.8927 mills. So what we did was, in looking at the recommendations of the headly override committee that you set up, was to, I think once, the recommendation was to split that among the various mills, because the police millage is really contained within the authorization of your charter operating millage, that was combined into one question, because your charter refers to it as a 13-mill levy, which includes three for police and fire. So two of the three-mill increase was allocated towards that question, and then the other one-mill increase, which was recommended, was designed to be allocated to the garbage tax. So the resolution before you presents to the voters two questions, an override of, which amounts to an increase of two mills for operating purposes, including police and fire, and a second question, which is an increase of one mill for garbage purposes. The resolution calls for an election to be held at the August primary. A few years ago, the Michigan election law was changed to basically say that local governments could only present questions to the voters four times during a year. There's an election at the end of February, there's an election, which happens to be tomorrow in May, which is mostly what school districts use, then there's an August election date, which is usually associated with a primary election, and then a November election date, which is associated with the general election for, in even years, for state offices and federal, and in odd years, for city purposes. So essentially, you only have four choices on an election date. The recommendation of, of the committee was to have this go before the voters at the August primary election, and the timing on that is that the language for any questions which are going to go to the August election have to be approved by the governing bodies by May 29th, and then forwarded on to the county clerk, so that they can be put on the ballots to be printed. So that's really what is the guts of the resolution, which is before you tonight. And the resolution, if I call your attention to it, we've titled it "A Resolution Calling Special Election for Millage Proposals," indicates in the first "Whereas" paragraph, section 9.4 of the city charter, authorizes the city to levy up to 13 mills for municipal purposes, of which levy three mills shall be devoted exclusively to police and fire." That comes right out of your charter. mill of its sanitation tax, reduced by operation of the headly amendment, to provide funds for garbage collection and disposal. Then what the resolution calls for in paragraph one is a special election of the qualified electors of the city, called and requested to be held on Tuesday, August 7, 2012, for the purpose of submitting the following proposals to the electors. And then there are the two millage proposals. The first one is titled Municipal Operating Police and Fire Millage Proposal, which asks for the two-mill increase. The second one is the Sanitation Millage Proposal, which asks for the one-mill increase. Now, I mentioned earlier that this language, if you look at what other communities have asked for, this looks very similar, because various state laws are very detailed as to what has to be in these questions. So the way the question is phrased is, in this draft resolution, "Shall the limitation on the amount of taxes which may be imposed on taxable property in the city of Berkeley be increased by two mills, which is $2 per $1,000 of taxable value, beginning in 2012, as new additional millage in excess of the limitation imposed by Michigan Compiled Law Section 211.34D, to partially restore city charter millage authorization previously approved by the electors, as reduced by operation of the headly amendment, to provide funds for municipal operating purposes, including police and fire services?" Estimated that two mills would raise approximately $908,000 when first levied in 2012. So that's the, the draft language for the first question. I want to explain what the various things are that the council may or may not change in this language if it decides to go forward. The first is the amount of the increase that you're being asked to do. In this proposal, it's two mills. You know, your total has been rolled back by more than that, but that's been what the recommendation is. But if you wanted to change that number, that could be changed from the two mills and the $2 per thousand that's referenced there in that second and third line. The second issue that you can decide is, how long is this millage going to be in place? The recommendation of the committee was to have it be in perpetuity. Because you are a home rule city, cities get authority to levy taxes in perpetuity. When the voters approved your charter many decades ago, that initial levy of 13 mills was allowed to be levied in perpetuity as long as the city existed. Other types of government entities, school districts, counties, and townships can only levy for up to 20 years at a time. So you may be used to seeing millages that expire or are done for less than, in perpetuity, and other units are often restricted to that. There have been a number of communities who have elected to have their charter increases limited to a number of years, but right now, as indicated, your charter is in perpetuity. So that is where, in the third line, it says, "Beginning in 2012," where that comes in. A third item which you have to decide is really when this levy is going to begin. I just mentioned that it says, "Beginning in 2012." This is where the resolution deviates slightly from the recommendation of the committee, because what the committee asked was a preference that the millage would be levied in December. If approved by the voters, this language would allow the millage to be levied beginning in December of 2012, but it would then revert to a July millage in 2013, along with all the other city millages. The reason for that is, is that the city, like most Michigan cities, levies its taxes in July, and that's really set forth in your city charter. In section, chapter 10 of your city charter sets forth the tax collection procedure, and the city levies taxes in July, all city taxes. However, this very situation was contemplated years ago. What happens if we vote a millage in after the July levy, but it's still in the same fiscal year? And there is a state law that's now in the Home Rule Cities Act, which allows a city to have a supplemental levy at the winter tax bill and have that be included for that first year only. So if the council wanted to go forward with that, you would be able to levy in December of this year, but every year after that, you would be required to levy in July, along with all the other city taxes. If you did not want to levy in December this year, that language could indicate that it begins in 2013, and then it would be included with the summer 2013 taxes. A lot of the rest of this is boilerplate. The new additional millage language is something that's required by state law to restore, partially restore, city charter millage authorization previously approved by the electors. That's indicating what the purpose of this is, as reduced by operation of the headly amendment. And then the next language, really echoed, which can chart itself, is to provide funds for municipal operating purposes, including police and fire services. The last sentence is also required by state law, and you have to provide an estimate of how much that will generate in the first year, and that is $908,000 based upon the calculations of the city's financials. I mentioned there were a few other things that you could decide what to do. I've identified the amount of the millage, when it begins, how long, and when you begin the levy. The other issue is the timing of the election, which, again, this is set up for the August election date, which is the next available election date, which you could present this question to the voters. The second proposal is, is really the sanitation millage proposal, which is substantially the same language, except it is limited to one mill for garbage collection and disposal services, and the estimate is that that would generate approximately $454,000 when first levied in 2012. So that's, in essence, what the, the resolution that's before you provides for, and again, it's up to the city council to decide what changes you would like to make or whether you would like to approve this, and I'd be happy to stop talking and answer any specific questions that you have related to either the language or the process.
Are there any questions?
Well, if, if there aren't any questions, and I have one, as I read this, the voter is going to get one vote, yes or no, for the entirety of those two items?
Actually, there's a separate vote for each question.
Oh.
So, so the, each of them is a separate proposal. So the municipal operating police and fire millage is a yes/no vote on the two-mill increase, and then there's a second question, which is the sanitation millage proposal, which is a yes/no vote on the one-mill increase.
And so therefore, one of them could pass and the other not?
Correct.
And is that a wise way of configuring this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I, I thought when, when we, we discussed that we could address this as one question. We would, and we would just have to identify them separately in terms of what, what the millage would be. I, I thought we had discussed that.
Well, well, I think we have discussed a variety of different options. At one point, there was a question about one mill for the operating, one mill for police and fire, and one mill for the sanitation. However, because the charter authorization is separate from the garbage tax, those are separate taxes, and therefore require a separate vote for an increase. So if the intent is to have two mills for operating police and fire and one mill for garbage, that would have to be in two questions. At one point, I think there was discussion about whether that would be three questions or one question. So this is set up as two separate proposals with two separate votes.
May I just continue the question that I had? And then I'll, I'll stop, just because I, I misunderstood when I spoke with, with Labor Council. I thought it was just one issue. Mr. McCall, would, would it be possible, say, for example, if, if we were to, if we were to, could, could we combine the language into one and then just indicate that some of the dollars, or, or two mills would go for, for operating, and one mill would go for, for sanitation? Or perhaps another way would be just put all three and, and then allows the operating to, to transfer some funds into sanitation? I guess I'm just, I'm just concerned about separating the two.
Or why can't you put the word "end" between the two of those?
Well, the, the reason is that they are separate legal authorizations for the taxes, and there are various rules about combining multiple purpose questions into one, but, but there is possibly a way to do it, which is, and initially, when this was discussed, the idea was to have the millage to go for the various purposes. You have the ability, because of the amount of the rollback, to ask for more than two mills for the operating question. So as indicated in the preamble to the resolution, the 13 mills has now been rolled back to 8.2, so there is about 3.8 mills, actually, 4, 4.8 mills worth of rollback that's occurred. You could ask a single question, but it would be limited to three mills for operating and police and fire, because that's what that charter millage is allowed to be used for. Now, I believe the, the city manager was saying, "But we also have the ability to use charter money for the garbage tax." So that's something, is something that could be done as well.
We can do that.
It's important to note that the garbage tax is very specific, and that it can only be used for those services, as indicated in that state be used for those services as indicated in that state law that deals with the authorization of that tax.
So then it would be configured in a different way and presented to the community in a different way?
It would. It wouldn't reference the sanitation or garbage services. It would only reference operating and police and fire.
Okay. Any consideration of that? Councilmember Stewart?
I guess I would like to, at least at this point, I would prefer to see it in one proposal and not limit that one mil just to go to sanitation and garbage disposal. But, so if we could have that all combined, you know, and have it rewritten for the May 21st meeting, I would, you know, I think that's the way we should go.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Niprotam Terebrak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as the one question or the two, no, I, the one mil for sanitation is very important. However, my concern is if there are, if they are two separate proposals and one does pass, one doesn't pass, that kind of puts us back into a position of not, you know, exactly knowing what's going to happen budget-wise. Now, part of the reason we're doing this, and the committee was very clear, in their recommendation to us, was that the three mils was critical for the city to, you know, maintain our services. And I think if that's the case, that's what's coming from that committee, I think it's our job to make sure that we try to do what that committee asked. And if they say we need the three, we're more likely to, I suppose our chances of getting the three are better if they're together, whereas if it's a two and a one thing, it just leaves a little bit more potential to leave us in a position where maybe in the future, we're still short on something, especially if, as you mentioned, and Mr. Sabuda said, was certainly doable for us to move operating expenses for solid waste.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So I would agree with the one, certainly. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Platanson, you need to get in there.
This actually eliminates a whole section of questions for me. I had a whole section just on the sanitation issue because my concern was putting one mil so specifically to that didn't leave us wiggle room if something occurred within other operating areas. And whereas, point of clarification, just one more time, the first section that talks about operating, that is not specifically dedicated funds. That is general operating funds, and that can be used for a multitude of departments, et cetera, as needs arise.
Yes.
Okay. So as a general idea, I favor that much more anyway because it leaves us a lot of options that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So three mils in one proposal for general operating is something that I'd like the idea of better anyway.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that same point, again, thank you for your work on this material and for explaining it so carefully to us. I appreciate the way in which you described the various levers or options that we have in dealing with this intricate verbiage here, and I appreciate your time with that. You know, having said that, I think it's very important that we listen to the advisory committee that works so hard and has studied this so carefully, as have we over the years as we've reviewed the budgets year after year and saw this potentiality approaching. Simply to me, it seems like having the three mils, as was suggested by the committee, in one simple approach to protect what we have and prepare for the future, position us for future growth, seems to make a lot of sense. And that's what I heard from the committee, and so anything that we could do to move that forward, I'd be in favor of that as well. As far as indeed the options and the wiggle room and things like that, I think are important. And again, to clarify the budgetary process that we as a community go through, all of those options and decisions would be held in public forum with input from the public, the director heads, leads of each of the areas, and stuff to ensure that those funds are applied each year as needed and where it best benefits the city. So I just wanted to clarify that as we consider a single package of three mils per the recommendation, there's a very open and transparent process of how that money would be allocated in accordance with the needs of the community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Platanson?
I have another question, but if people want to continue on the three mils, it's not, it's sort of on a sidetrack, so.
Okay, well, let's stay with the three mils for one sec. I think it is clear from what I'm hearing from everybody that there is a general agreement with the advisory committee's recommendation and a desire, an inclination, to put that before the voter. So I, I'm not hearing any disagreement there. Now the question becomes, how is that presented to the public? And the piece before us here crafts it in two segments, and I'm hearing now a disinclination to move in that direction, rather simplifying it and reflecting more the vision of the advisory committee. It's three mils and, you know, ask the voter yes or no on the three mils. Is that substantially where we are? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we'll come to your question in a second. There are a couple of other variables that you mentioned that I'd just like to get a sense of from everybody. Number one, the August 7th date, election date, is the general sense that that's where we're going with this? Is there any?
Yes.
Okay, so we have consensus on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Next one, of the three mils we got, and the next one is, "Beginning in 2012."
Yes.
Yes. Well, now there's a question here from Lisa. Okay. Councilmember Platanson?
So we're looking at the recommendations of the committee.
Yep.
I think that the idea in their eyes for December was just, was in moving forward with December's as a whole, it's a lower tax bill. Apparently, the reason it's a lower tax bill is because all of the city taxes are then levied in July. I don't think they necessarily had a chance to discuss it in that light, understanding December the first year and July every year thereafter. So I'm just wondering about the idea of levying in December and then again, six and a half months later, and looking at how that would be, so that would be money, the money levied in December would be incorporated into the 2012-13 budget, which is the budget we're having presented to us on Monday. How does that factor into that budget? What's the process for that happening? And then looking at levying it again in July, is that something we want to move forward with, and how does that work out?
Reason for question. Mrs. Sabuda?
Well, what would happen is this, is we would present the budget to you this coming Monday, as you point out, Councilwoman, and then what would happen is if the vote passed, we would then amend the budget to increase the revenue. You would see those revenues coming into the, coming into the, into the budget for 1213. So the budget amendment process would get you in this fiscal year coming up. And then, of course, every year thereafter, you would then see it in July through the normal budget process. We also recall, I also recall talking with the committee about, if we couldn't legally do the December levy year in and year out, did we have a problem with going to July? And they said no, they didn't have a problem with that, as long as, you know, they didn't want to do anything that was illegal. So they did have, we did have that discussion. Wasn't long, but we did have that discussion. So we would go through the budget amendment process, and then that would get the monies into, into the appropriations column, and we would take it from there each and every July thereafter.
But if we take Councilmember Platanson's question and make it concrete, going back to this $175 average cost, is then a taxpayer, a resident, going to be paying $175,000 in December, I, $175? $175 in December? And $175 again in July? And that's, I think, the bottom of your question.
As it's set up right now, the answer is yes.
Okay.
That's right.
So within six months, there's going to be?
There would be a second levy, right. And they would pay $175 twice.
No.
Approximately.
If I take your question a little further, is that something we want to do?
Josephine has spoken.
Well, I mean, it's a legitimate question.
If I may, your honor? Now, if you decline to go December, then your only choice is July, and then you're just looking at the July 2013 levy.
Correct.
Okay? So the real question here is, is look, do you want to levy in December because you do, under the law, able to do it one time? Or do you want to opt out of that option and then just levy July of 2013?
That's essentially my question.
That's where you are.
Right. So what is the sense of the council? Councilmember Kedek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the committee was looking at levying once a year and not once or twice in six months. My question, Mr. Sabuda, how much, if at all, will it hurt us or help us by not levying in December?
Well, if, on the three mils, we would be foregoing $1.3 million in December of 2012. Okay? So you would, you would not see that revenue in the budget for 1213. But then you would see it in for the budget for 1314. So you're foregoing $1.3 million.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm echoing those same thoughts as well, as I recall the conversation, and I do recall that additional conversation about would July be a feasible option if, for whatever appropriate reason, December wasn't a sustainable or ongoing option, and I recall that as well. At the same time, as I think about, you know, the budget process and the materials that we will be reviewing starting next week formally, we're setting a budget that does not include this additional 1.3.
Correct.
It's going to be a rough year. It's going to be a lot of additional sacrifice and tweaking and tuning to try to make ends meet without that money. And if, the decision that we talk about now in terms of timing would either potentially give us some relief in this upcoming fiscal year to have this additional injection come in, or to try to ride it out and then into the following year, the next budget cycle, where this additional, as you mentioned, would come in. So then it gets to the, to the sentiment, you know, how much can we ask to help do right now, like a double payment, if you will? And that's awful tricky, when I think about it. That's really tricky to say, as much as I would wish we had this revenue, I even wish we weren't in this situation in the first place to even need to do this, right? So I struggle with the December-July timing, quite honestly. Just, you know, the December seemed to make a lot of sense, as I thought about December, December, December. But, you know, there's things in the way that certainly are higher powers than what we can work with at the moment, so we'll see. So I think, I'm feeling less comfortable with the December levy, and if it was a sustainable thing, you know, the budget is going to be really tight this year. This would have been terrific, but to ask that additional step, I'm having a little bit of trouble with at the moment.
Okay. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, your honor. I agree. I think that we need to go on an annual basis. I know what the council was trying, or the committee was trying to say, let's get it in a year when it's, in a time of the year when it's not so tight. But I agree with Councilmember Baker. I don't think we want to hit them twice in six months, and we should go with 2013 and go on the standard bylaw levy time.
Anybody else on the council? Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Niprotam Terebrak?
I think what Councilmember Baker said a moment ago is, is the only thing that's giving me any pause on this. You know, regardless of, you know, this millage and what happens, a vote in August, starting, you know, next week, and we already have our budgets, we're going to be crafting the budget, making the difficult decisions on the 1213 budget, you know, assuming that there isn't anything anyway. So if it were to happen, if it were to pass, and we were to get it in December, you know, that would be great, and we could change some things, but we, you know, we're operating as if we're not going to have it anyway. You know, with that being the case, you know, as much as I'd like to have that money as well in December strictly, you know, to help alleviate some of the potential cuts, and there are going to have to be some cuts and some decisions made, I see it as very difficult to hit our residents twice in six months for $175. Keeping in mind that that is going to mean that there will be some, some changes in the 2012-2013 year because we're not going to get any money till July of 2013, and it's always more difficult to bring things back once they've already been cut than to keep them going. But for, you know, the sake of our residents and the sake of the economy, you know, I can't justify asking them for $3.50 or whatever, whatever that is, I'm not a math guy, in six months. Sorry.
You were right.
Mind that, you were right. Yep.
If I may just address that, and just to explain why that's in there and the rationale behind it, and again, just as background information, the idea behind that additional language was, most cities' fiscal year starts on July 1, and that's when you levy taxes. So really, it's very difficult, almost really impossible, to have an election in the same year and have the tax revenue come in. The reason that the statute was amended to allow for the supplemental December levy and the theory I think behind it was, December of 2012 and July of 2013 are two separate fiscal years. So the money is going to two different budget years, and it's in two different calendar years from the standpoint of technically, the residents aren't paying twice in the same year, so for purposes of income taxes and everything else, that's the same calendar year. That's, I think, the rationale behind why that's allowed for that one time only. I will say also, there is some precedent here in Michigan recently with shifting or having that tax levied, or a tax levied twice in the same year. You may recall that it used to be, 10 years ago, the winter tax levy was when the county taxes were levied in a lot of the school districts. Starting about 10 or more years ago, the state shifted the county tax levy from a winter tax to a summer, and they kind of phased that in. So the idea was that people were actually paying that county tax twice within a six month period as it shifted from a December to a June levy. And similarly, the state education tax, which is the six mil tax levy that the state levies, was also shifted from a December levy to a July, although when the state did that, that one year they made that shift, they made the next July just five mils. So I just say that just to point out that there have been other situations recently with December levies being shifted to July levies where people have paid that tax technically twice in a six-month period, even though it was different fiscal years.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sess.
Mr. McGowan, just for clarification purposes, I don't think the council will do this, but I just want to make sure I understand this. Let's say the city council wanted to do December. Would we need to amend our city charter in order to be able to do that, in order to levy instead of July, in December? Would that require an amendment to our city charter?
Do you mean just the one time or going forward?
No, for other.
Yeah, going forward, if you wanted to levy in December, that would require a city charter amendment. There's various sections within your city charter that set forth the timing of payments, and that would have to go through a different process.
Well, I think we need to take one thing at a time.
Correct. But I just wanted you all to know that that is available.
It is an option out there, but not a viable one. Historically, the tendency of this council and prior councils is to be reluctant at all to raise taxes.
Yes.
And that's why you're getting a sense here from my colleagues, a reluctance to go to the residents twice in a six-month period. And I think they're right. The tradition of the past has served us well to be as careful with our community purse as possible, and in that regard, I'm thankful for the prior councils who have held the line on this very issue and made difficult decisions. But now, we have come to a threadbare situation where we are of necessity obligated to ask the voters to offer some help because of the needs that we have at the moment in terms of the services that we all enjoy and the vision that the residents have for the future of this community. When the front tire of my car gets a little soft, I don't wait till I'm on I-94 to get a flat tire. I will take action in advance so that I'm not stranded on I-94. And so it is for us as a city as well. We do not wait to have a We do not wait to have a crash, a financial crash, that will have draconian consequences, but rather we want to take this kind of remedial action. And I believe as well the residents understand that in their own personal lives and the services that they value in this city. So, are there any additional thoughts? Councilmember Stedman.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, even though you have pointed out how it is legal to do this and how there's been precedent set for collecting twice in the same year because it's not the same fiscal year, but to our residents' pocketbooks, you know, who may be slim, twice in a year would be a hardship. And I have one other point that... I also think that if we were to collect twice in a year, in December and in July again, I think we could jeopardize not collecting anything.
Well, it can't be a heads I win, tails you lose situation. We need to, and although we do need this money, we have to operate and manage and get us through to July, and we will. Councilmember Davidson.
Just for the people at home, one of the number-one questions that I was asked when coming here was this operating fund. What types of services, what types of programs are funded out of that so that people get a general sense of what this goes to?
I know the finance director, well, we can both answer this question, but it is primarily what we call the general fund. And that would be things like public safety, parks and recreation, the library, administration, building department, planning department, you know, code inspections, basically everything, even public works to a certain degree. So, when we talk about operations, we talk about the general fund primarily, and so that means just about every service that the city provides gets affected by the operating fund. So, those services are funded by the general fund. Of course, there are some specific services that are funded by other funds, like, for example, the local and major funds, and that's for streets primarily. But you can utilize general funds to make some street improvements. You can make a transfer into some of these other funds to do whatever it is the city council would do. The general fund is the only fund that's flexible enough to be able to do that. And we, I guess we interchangeably call it the operating funds compared to the general fund.
If I may add on to that, Mr. Mayor. Also remember, this is the, the general fund is the fund where if we have an extraordinary event, we have an emergency.
Of course.
This is where we're going to go. If we have to repair a roof, if we have to, if we have a health and safety issue, this is the first place we're going to look at in order to repair or make those types of improvements because of the flexibility. So, on top of maintaining of the city services, you have those types of issues, and they do come up. And when you don't have something there, that's tough.
Councilmember Davidson.
So, just to follow up to that, so some of the things that people talk to me about as concerns, and I'm sure you've all heard the same things, things like code enforcement, capital improvements like parks and park maintenance, books for the library and library hours, building department staff to keep inspections and permits moving, those were major concerns that I heard from the residents. And it sounds like these are the items that are covered, these are the types of items that are covered by this fund.
Operating fund or general fund, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, do you have a sense from the council of how this needs to be rewritten?
I think it's very clear how it needs to be rewritten, based on the comments. And actually, it's quite simply to turn this into one question. So, the idea is that the two-mil question for municipal operating, police, and fire will now be a three-mil question, with the numbers changed to reflect that, and the references to the sanitation millage as a separate question would be deleted. So, if you want, I've even actually marked it as we've been talking. And then, of course, the other major change is to indicate that this would begin in 2013 instead of 2012. So, I have that marked and can make those changes to come back, or if you'd like, I could go through line or paragraph to show the changes if you want to understand exactly how that would be changed.
Is there a question of time here and deadline, or can we wait for another meeting?
It'll be very tight, Your Honor, but we could potentially wait if you so choose to do so. It'll be very tight. I know the city clerk.
We also have two meetings coming up that we could add it to those agendas.
Yes, next week. We have the budget meetings. We could make it an item there.
That's right. Thank you.
And so therefore, Mr. McGowan, you could rewrite this
Yes.
To reflect exactly the sentiments of the council.
Exactly what's been discussed today, yes.
We can bring it back then to the meeting next week and pass it and move it along. Vote on it.
Right. Your Honor, the only thing, the only thing I suppose, I know we're running tight, is we generally don't video the budget work sessions, and I know the public would want to know. I mean, obviously, the budget sessions are open to the public, and they can hear at that time, but it would not be televised.
No, there's two options, the council member, Protonson, Wester.
My preference would be if we, I know it'll be tight if we can make the meeting on the 21st work, I would prefer that it be televised and that the budget work sessions are already long and very concentrated, so if we could keep those focused, that would be...
Yep. Once it's approved by the council, I can deliver it to the county the next day.
Okay. So, the 21st would work, are you saying the 20th?
As long as you come in and sign it.
I'll be sure to sign it. So, Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thanks, yeah, Mr. Mayor. I was actually just going to affirm the same sentiment. I'm very much in favor of this forum in this room with these folks to have this important of a conversation. So, I'd support focusing the budget work sessions on its, working on the budget for the 1213 without these funds. We're going to just see what we can do. And as was mentioned earlier, it's going to be very tight. And then come back on the 21st with the revised language.
Okay. Councilmember Stedman.
Just to, is there a possibility that we could receive the wording next week, early, Monday or Tuesday?
Sure.
And then we could make comments on it through the week and so that if the...
Well, we need to be very careful when we do that, okay? So, just please direct your questions to me, and I will work with the board council to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. If there aren't any further questions or discussion on this item, then are we ready to proceed to a next item that doesn't have viability in light of this discussion?
We could do a motion to postpone it.
We could do a motion to postpone, Your Honor.
Well, it's not going to be the same motion anyway.
I think the cleanest thing to do is to vote this down
Okay.
And bring it back up next time around. So, yes.
We can vote it down, or we can, or it can fail for lack of a second, if we decide to go that route.
Okay.
That's a good point, Your Honor.
Before we do that and discuss that, if I could, our members of the media here, if you could try to help us with any potential questions, you know, people are going to see that we voted this down or it failed for lack of a second. I just don't want the residents to be totally thrown off when they read this tomorrow if it just says Berkeley City Council votes down, you know, millage, and the next week, or next week, we come back with another one. I don't have any analogies about cars or anything, I'm just, you know, do whatever you want. But if there's a way, thank you.
I'm confident in the wisdom of our journalists here to reflect that. Councilman Kedek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible to table the motion?
It's possible to table the motion, but it's wise not to.
I would agree. I think we can only table it until the end of the meeting, anyway.
Let's solve this rather quickly. Ms. Prince, would you please call item number four?
Resolution number R-20-12, matter of approving resolution calling for a millage proposal to be placed on the August 7, 2012 primary election ballot.
Is it a motion to approve R-2012? Hearing none, this motion fails, and we will see it back again in the future. Then we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is communications. Ms. Prince, who should be first?
Oh, that would be Councilmember Stedman.
Councilmember Stedman.
Oh. I really have nothing this evening except to remind everybody that next week is Berkeley Day's week.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
One thing, Your Honor. This past Thursday was the first Thursday in the month, and the Coolidge Collection had their balloons out, and they were having an open house. I, my wife and I walked to Coolidge and talked to a number of the businesses, and I'd like to say that they're doing a wonderful job down there. There are flyers that they have about the Coolidge Collection and all the Coolidge businesses. I got some of them and put them on the table over there, so appreciate if people would take a look at those and support the businesses on Coolidge because they're working real hard to do a great job for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three quick things this evening. Our city's Downtown Development Authority, DDA, meets this week's Wednesday, May 9. Topics include the 12-mile on Coolidge intersection, the farmer's market, and another topic is called wayfinding. It's mentioned in our master plan, is one of the things that we seek to work on. And wayfinding is, to me, is a thoughtful and intentional approach to spotlighting our city. Basically, what wayfinding would bring to us is the notion of directional and destination signs that help present the city in the best light, you know, say, here's how you can find these kinds of interesting attractions and destination spots. And so I'm very pleased to see that our DDA will be considering a wayfinding study as part of its work to help promote the great city that we all know and love. Second quick thought, again, at a recent meeting, we appropriated some funds to do a corridor study along Coolidge. As was mentioned, there are some terrific things already taking place in there, and we're looking to do a study to see what other ways we could work to help make that an even better place to work and live and play and shop. And as luck would have it, SEMCOG, which was mentioned earlier, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, hosted a two-hour training session on the art and science of road corridor assessments. Now, I know that most all of you attended that session as well as I did. It actually was, it actually was really cool. I know just a little bit about it, and now I know how much more I don't know about it, but the fact that we have some tremendous professionals that are working on this, it was a great, a great session. Topics included access management, which is like inways and outways of the roads, a green infrastructure, road safety, walkability, bikeability, and eye-catching commercial areas. And it was an applied course. There was the theory, but then lots of real-world examples and photos and illustrations of, you know, here's the before and after of implementing these kinds of things. And so that was a worthwhile time to see the kinds of things that we can do and see as we envision the Coolidge and the city in the future. And finally, it was Bob Hope who said, "If you haven't any charity in your heart, you have the worst kind of heart trouble." Again, it was Bob Hope who said, "If you haven't any charity in your heart, you have the worst kind of heart trouble." And I offer that because what's coming up, of many kinds of things we have, there is a Bowl for Kids' Sake event, and I'll just set this here, and flyers will be available throughout the city to benefit Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Southeast Michigan. So, Big Brothers and Big Sisters has a tremendous track record of support for the youth in our region and in our communities and providing many quality programs and offerings for them. We in Berkeley have the opportunity to host this year's event. This event is sponsored by DTE Energy and Strategic Staffing Solutions, and they rotate from city to city, and someone was able to kind of help ensure that it comes to Berkeley this year. And it's on Thursday, May 24, at Hartfield, starting at 6:00. It is a charity fundraiser event, and they'd like to put the fun in fundraiser, so there's food, games, prizes, and of course, fun for one and all. Teams are forming now, and we're working on one, Berkeley's Bowling Bombers or something like that. If you're interested in joining that or any of the others, I'd like to thank our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Caldwell, for agreeing to form a second team on behalf of the city. If you'd like to join an existing team, if you'd like to form your own team, if you'd like to support those of us who are on the team so far or any of the others who hopefully will join us, that'd be tremendous. But please come out and support Big Brothers, Big Sisters at the Bowl for Kids' Sake event on the 24th. And thanks to Hartfield and all the folks for helping organize this and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker, for bringing that event to our city. Mayor Protem Terbrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I want to thank again the members of the Citizens Advisory Committee. And when we first brought this up a few meetings ago, you know, there was some question about whether, you know, we were going to do whatever we wanted anyway, if this committee really were, if we were going to just stack this committee with people who were going to say things that we wanted them to say. And, you know, at that time, I said, well, if the committee is not in favor of this, then there's no way that I can, in good conscience, support a millage increase for our residents. You know, we had a very diverse cross-section of Berkeley residents on this committee, you know, the 15 members that were, that comprised the committee. They had very good discussion on a number of topics. They became very educated, perhaps more educated than they ever wanted to be, on city finances and how things work, but it's the things that they needed to know in order to make an informed decision. As was mentioned earlier, all of their information is online, agendas and minutes, although I didn't see the minutes right now when I was looking through, but it says agendas and minutes, so if they're not up there, they will be up there shortly. I urge everyone to go and look at these and look at, you know, how the final votes even came down. As was mentioned in the report by the committee, there were a number of members who suggested four mils or higher. And, you know, the committee discussed everything, and ultimately comes down to, you know, feasibility, and they settled on the three. There was a committee member who also went lower, but I believe, you know, the vote of that committee was a very strong majority, a very clear majority for the three mils. I believe it was 14 to 1, but again, I was looking at the minutes to see, they're not there, but regardless, there are a number of members in the audience today. That really affirms, you know, my faith in this millage as something that the city needs. If these residents, who, a few of them have been involved in the city, know a lot about the city, but others probably had never seen any of the budget books or any of that information, to come out with the answers that, the recommendation, I should say, that they came out with is a pretty strong statement for me and something as a council member that I certainly, it makes it a lot easier for me to get behind something when I know that we have a nice committee, a cross-section of residents that are very strongly in favor of going forward with this. As the mayor mentioned, nobody wants to increase taxes. I mean, we're all residents here, too. We all feel it. I mean, just because we're on council and we know what the budget looks like, you know, it impacts all of us. It's not something we want to do, but unfortunately, it is something that we need to do, and it's something that the residents also see as something that we need to do. Finally, as Denise Brainerd mentioned earlier, there is a softball game coming up, and in the past, I may have made statements or said things. I'm not going to do that this year. One, we got assaulted last year, we'll say. But really, you know, baseball, softball is a game of pitching. It really comes down to pitching. And when, you know, your pitcher's giving up 20, 22 runs, regardless of the defense, it comes down to the balls and strikes, and I really, really hope that our pitching improves this year, because I don't, I just don't want to have excuses. If we lose in a pitcher's duel, hey, we lose in a pitcher's duel. I just, you know, don't want it to be a walk fest or a, you know, go for shots. Thank you.
I would like to assure the Mayor Protem that the coaching staff have taken action to prevent a recurrence of that.
Just a couple of updates this evening from the Environmental Advisory Committee. They have been working with the Huntington Woods Environmental Committee as well, and they are putting together a joint electronics recycling drop-off. So, whenever you're wondering what to do with, you know, an old VCR, I know some of you still have them out there, they can go to this for free, drop them off Sunday, May 20. I think it's 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Huntington Woods DPW located on 11 Mile. So, you can bring in all types of electronics and metal to this event, free, drop it off. The Environmental Advisory Committee is also planning a bike... The Environmental Advisory Committee is also planning a bike ride to be held on Wednesday, May 23, at 6:30 PM, starting at the community center. It's a family-friendly event, so the bike ride will include stops at Baggerdave's and Clark's, so be sure to bring your family out for that. Just an update from the Planning Commission meeting. As you recall, we had a rezoning before us, and there were a number of concerns that came up from the residents in regards to things like dumpster placement and landscaping and things. And a site plan was brought to the Planning Commission for approval on that property. Those concerns of the residents had not been addressed in that site plan, and our Planning Commission did a fantastic job of taking a look at those items and sending the applicant back for a revisit of that to make sure those items were addressed. So I know there were some concerns that the Planning Commission wasn't necessarily hearing the residents, and I just wanted to let everybody know that they very strongly heard those messages and that site plan is in the process of being revisited. So it's an update from that, and I think they may be back at the next Planning Commission meeting for a revisit there. And that is all for me this evening. Thank you.
And next, Councilmember Kadeckel has something to pitch, I'm sure?
We'll get to that in a minute, Mr. Mayor. Well, since we're on that subject, we'll start. For those of you that know baseball, there's something called earned runs, earned run average, and I'd say probably 19 of those runs were unearned. So I hope the adjustment that the mayor is making, or the coaching staff, excuse me, is a new staff in the new third baseman.
I played third base last year.
But on a serious note, I don't want to repeat, but I want to echo my sentiments to the committee, not just the committee, the staff that worked overtime, administration who worked overtime. This is a real serious thing, so serious that one committee member is here tonight that was supposed to be out of town on a business trip, rearranged it, and has taken a red-eye out tonight so they can attend their business meeting. So when Mayor Protem Turbick talks about how serious this is, and the diverse committee, the diverse members of the committee, I want to thank each and every person involved in this, including administration and staff. I had the pleasure of going to Dialogue Day, participating in that. We had 60 kids from Oak Park High School and 60 kids from Berkeley High School, together with community leaders from the various cities, and you really get to know what kids are thinking, you get to know what it's all about with kids, great exercise program, and I look forward to participating in it again next year. As Mayor Fraser brought up about it's time for poppies, in addition to the American Legion Auxiliary, Women Auxiliary, the VFW will be out throughout the city this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, also with poppies. Just a reminder, you must be 21 to attend the Taste of Berkeley, because there will be wine served by the American Legion. And I know we'll probably hear more about this later on, but I want to thank personally someone I consider a friend, Sergeant Tom Zunzle, who retired this past week. If any officer wants to model themselves after anyone, it's Sergeant Tom Zunzle. Came to work every day, did his job, did it diligently, never complained, never got involved in the politics, and went home. And I thank him for serving our city for the past 25 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kadeckel. Mr. Sessa?
Very brief, Your Honor. I, too, want to again thank members of the Citizens Advisory Committee, that you all did an amazing job, for those of you that are here this evening, and I want to thank you for your time. I know that we bombarded you all with lots of information, lots of numbers, but I thank you for your patience and for your time, each and every one of you. Thank you, thank you very much. With that, Your Honor, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, would like to thank the Citizens Advisory Committee. I really enjoyed our time together. It was great. You guys really challenged me. And I enjoyed it thoroughly, and you guys were great students. You picked it up very well. So thank you, thank you very much. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Schneider?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Well, I have a couple of things, just like to, of course, echo what my colleagues are saying in terms of the gratitude to this committee for the work that you have done and the diligence with which you have attended to the details. It's not easy, and I know the residents at home, when they listen to each presentation, even this evening, you know, the blizzard of numbers that start happening, and percentages and laws that all intersect with each other, and then all the acronyms. Makes it difficult. So we're really thankful for everybody who spent so much time dealing with this and making the recommendations that you did for the sake of our city, for the sake of the future of our city. On another topic, I'd like to report to the residents of the city, the essentials of the evaluation of the city manager, which was held in closed session at our last council meeting. It was an exceptionally positive evaluation, done with great diligence by my colleagues who looked into various dimensions of the performance of the city manager. And despite the fact that it was an outstanding evaluation, there was not even a scintilla of discussion about increasing compensation. That gives you a sense of where we are, that it didn't even come up as a topic for discussion. That gives the context of where we are financially and why this three-mill proposal is so essential. I think everybody there was very pleased and very thankful, and we continue to be thankful for your service to the city.
Thank you, Your Honor.
But we're not able to add to your compensation package either. No more than any of us in our own work are getting too many raises these last several years. The Public Safety Golf Day is coming up on May 19, and I understand some of the golfers are taking lessons and sharpening their swing and so on and so forth. So that should be a wonderful... It always is a wonderful day, and if there are residents who would like to participate in that, I suspect there are a few spots still available. Finally, our Public Safety Department engaged in training in Highland Park on April 25. It was conducted in conjunction with Alliance ambulance staff and the firefighters down there in Highland Park. I spent the day with our troops there, and I'm thankful to Chief Eshman, who allowed me to join them for the occasion. I must say that the training was as realistic as training can be, and our guys were, and gals, were safe and challenged, and the highlight of the entire event for me was seeing my colleague, Councilmember Jack Blanchard, come down headfirst down a ladder. Let me tell you, when I was 25, I don't think I could do that. But it was a marvelous thing to see. So I enjoyed it, and the mayor of Highland Park and the firefighters and staff down there were so welcoming and so wonderful to us. So I'm thankful to the chief for allowing me to be part of it. Next week, we have budget meetings, Monday and Tuesday, and maybe Wednesday. These budget meetings for members of council become lonely activities. There is no need for crowd control at these meetings. Basically, no one shows up except the members of council and the city staff from the departments to represent their respective budgets. So I would encourage anyone who has an interest in how the city budget comes together to join us, and you will be either educated or amused or frustrated. Either way, it'll be a worthwhile endeavor. And that's all I have this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Kadeckel, support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Steadman?
Yes.
Turbick?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadeckel?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. May 7 meeting of the 34th council is adjourned. Thank you.